Let's start with the roll call.
Mr. Henderson.
Here.
Mr. Petroselli.
Yeah.
Mr. Galler Ducci. Mr. Galler.
He's muted, but he's here, yeah.
Mr. Colosimo.
He's here, too.
Mr. Verducci.
Here.
Mrs. Schneider.
Here.
Mr. Shashowski.
Yes.
Mayor Copeland. He's here, I see him.
He's on mute.
Yep. Solicitor McDermott.
Here.
Engineer Brett.
Here.
Chief King.
There you go, now say hello.
I'm here.
Here.
Chief Costain.
Here.
And then, Mr. Miller.
Well, how come it goes? It just goes, just move the curtain.
Okay. Um, welcome to the December Borough of Bridgeville meeting. Do we have any visitors in the waiting room that want to speak?
All mics are on, so if anyone wants to.
Are there any visitors that want to speak this evening? More time, are any visitors that want to speak? Okay, we'll move on to the regular order of business. Joe, if you want to mute those lines, that'd be great. Okay, I need a motion to approve the November 9th, 2020 regular meeting minutes as submitted.
I shall move.
Nino and BJ, I'm sorry, second.
I'll second it, yeah.
Second BJ, all in favor? Opposed? The motion carries. Need a motion to approve the December 2020 bill list.
I'll move, Bill.
A second, Nick.
All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the December 18th, 25th, January 1st, and 8th, 2021 payrolls.
I shall move.
I'll second it.
Nino and BJ, all in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to adopt the Resolution Number 2020 dash 21. A resolution of the Borough of Bridgeville approving the budget for the fiscal year 2021 and adopting the same.
Uh, Joe V will move.
I second you, Joe. Not anybody else, it's fine.
So Joe made a motion and Nino a second, all in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to adopt the Resolution Number 2020 dash 22. Resolution of the Borough of Bridgeville, setting the tax rates for the year 2021. Note that the 2021 millage remains unchanged, 6.5 mills on buildings and 10 mills on land.
I'll move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2020 dash 23. A resolution of the Borough of Bridgeville, establishing fees for the filing of applications, permits, and licenses for the borough.
I shall move.
I was checking it, BJ.
All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? That motion carries. I need a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 1019. An ordinance of the Borough of Bridgeville, amending the borough's code of ordinances, Chapter 18, Part 3, Sewage Rates and Collection, to establish sewage rates for 2021, to clarify and update rules for billing and collection, and to provide for sewage rate adjustments to be adopted by Resolution of Borough Council as authorized under law.
I'll move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? That motion carries. I need a motion to approve the Morgan Heights LLC Plan of Lots Lot Line Relocation between two existing lots at 362 and 372 Washington Avenue, pending satisfying and/or any recommendations from Allegheny County Department of Economic Development. Under notes, plan has been reviewed by the Borough Engineer, and he confirms that it conforms to the Borough zoning, subdivision, and land development ordinances. Plan has also been recommended for approval by the Bridgeville Planning Commission.
I have a question.
You have a question under that, go ahead.
Joe, was there any purpose of them moving the parking spaces to the other building? Is there some type of plans in the future?
Uh, I couldn't answer. I know the applicant is actually on the line tonight. If we'd like, if he could answer, he could unmute himself, if you're okay with that.
Yeah, so, uh, we're adding, we're selling the building down there, and we're adding the parking on to the apartment buildings.
So you're selling the building that had the parking spaces, so you're taking the parking spaces away from the building you're selling?
No.
And just adding them to the other property?
No, it's actually the opposite. The, the parking lot is actually on the property of 362 Washington Avenue. And it's going to be, now it's going to be joined with the property on 372 Washington Avenue.
And 372 is an apartment building?
It is, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll entertain a motion. There's no more questions?
Don't move, Bill, this is BJ.
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Opposed?
Hi.
Motion carries. I need a motion to approve change order number three for the McLaughlin Run Park Improvement Project. Change order will extend the contract completion date by seven calendar days to accommodate delays.
I shall move.
Second.
Nino and Joe, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? The motion carries. Need a motion to concur and recommend to the Shore West Council Governments to accept the lowest responsible bid and award contract to Independent Enterprises Incorporated, an amount of $38,775 for the base and add alternate bids for the CD46 ADA Rams and Sidewalk Improvements Project. Note that the CDBG grant awarded an amount of $38,000, and will replace the ADA rams on Murray and Station Streets. We got BJ and Joe, all in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Opposed? That motion carries. I need a motion to authorize the dispersment of $15,682.50 from the General Fund to Stefanix Next Generation Contract Company for partial payment number one of the Police Department Sallyport Concrete Floor Repair Project.
So move.
I'll second it, BJ.
All in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Opposed? That motion carries. Just to note, Joe Cowherd, thank you so much for sending pictures out with your notes. It's a, it's a great way to keep us.
It really is.
Really appreciate that.
Joe, is that project almost done?
Yes, the floor has to cure now to the end of the month, and they have to seal it one more time. So the police will be able to park in the garage beginning of the year.
Great, and I need a motion to authorize a dispersment of $191,000 for, I'm sorry, $191,452.50 and 50 cents from the Capital Projects Fund, the LMNR Excavating LLC, for partial payment number one for the McLaughlin Run Park Improvements Flood Mitigation Project.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
This is probably for Kevin. Kevin, so if we're paying out $191,000, so that only leaves us about 80 grand left. I assume that's sufficient as far as all the work that still needs done?
Yeah, they, they have the, the earthworks been, been completed, other than putting the topsoil down, and they're starting the trash rack, actually. So our expectations are, other than some minor touch-up in the spring, they're going to get finished here before the end of the year. So they did well with getting the earthwork done quickly.
So is that a whole 80,000 being held until next spring, or are you anticipating another dispersment?
I figure in January, we'll probably take it down to 10%, and then the last 10% will be in the spring after the grass grows.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion for that dispersment.
I'll move it.
Second? Second by Joe, all in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? The motion carries. I need a motion to authorize a dispersment of $57,895.25 from the Capital Projects Fund to Skier Ready Site Development and Paving Company for partial payment number three of the McLaughlin Run Park Improvements Project.
I shall move.
Motion by Nino, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Joe, all in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Opposed? The motion carries. I need a motion to authorize a Borough Engineer to prepare plans, specifications, and construction documents for the following projects. Number one, the Stormwater Separators Project. Number two, the McLaughlin Park Storm Sewer Outfall Repair. And number three, the Borough Building Roof Replacement. Do I have a motion?
I'll give you the motion, Bill, this is BJ.
Second.
Second by Joe, all in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Opposed?
Bill, one, I'm sorry, one more question. Kevin, same thing with this one? So it's about 100,000, a little over 100,000? All those projects?
Yes.
Good, Joe?
Yeah, thank you, sorry.
All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? That motion carries. I need a motion to authorize Garvin Boward Beaco Engineering Company to complete geotechnical engineering necessary for the Werner Avenue Retaining Wall Project.
I shall move.
Motion by Nino, do I have a second?
I'll second it, BJ.
All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? The motion carries. Look forward to that project getting done, that seems to get, getting worse.
Getting worse.
Yeah.
Need a motion to exonerate tax collector Anne Marie Parisi from the collection of 2017 delinquent real estate taxes that have been sent to Jordan Tax Service for leaning.
I'll move it.
Joe Verducci, and second by BJ, all in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? The motion carries. I need a motion to accept and pay any commission due November 2020 Real Estate Tax Collectors Report.
I'll move. I'll second.
Second by Nick, all in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? The motion carries. I need a motion to acknowledge receipt of the October and November 2020 Treasures Report.
I'll move.
Joe Verducci, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second.
Second by Nick, all in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Opposed? That motion carries. I need a motion to accept the November 2020 Police Report.
Don't move, BJ.
I'll second, Nick.
My Nick, all in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
You skipped number 13.
I did, huh? Okay. Thank you. I need a motion to authorize a dispersment of $129,631.35 from the Highway Aid Fund to Young Blood Paving Incorporated for partial payment number one for the 2020 Roadway Improvement Project.
I shall move.
Nino, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by BJ, all in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Opposed? The motion carries. I'm sure Young Blood would not have been happy with me if we got. Okay, we'll move on to committee reports. Administration, Virginia Schneider.
Thank you, Mr. President. Currently, the administrative offices are closed to foot traffic. However, the lobby is still open for drop-off payments. And those visitors requiring an in-person meeting can do so by requesting an appointment ahead of time. And they're utilizing the meeting room, the municipal building meeting room, because you're able to practice the appropriate social distancing in that room. However, the room will not be open for any other group meetings of any kind. I think, Bill, we talked about last month, we're gonna, currently, I think we'll continue with the virtual meetings in January. I don't know if you want to talk about that now, but I think, given the situation, maybe we should just continue this platform until further notice. That's why I wanted to let the residents know that ahead of time. Um, and is that all right with you? I think we discussed it last time, but we talked about it before the meeting, and just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, I'm sorry, what's, what's the date of our first meeting, Joe? Do you know offhand?
The 11th.
It's early, right? With June of, okay. So yeah, I mean, given the cir, you know, situation and circumstances of rising numbers, I think it makes prudent sense to continue in this vein right now.
Okay. And then, lastly, the employee handbook, as well as the newly defined job descriptions, are still currently under review with the solicitor. Hope to have those by January. And employee performance reviews are currently underway. So we're moving forward. Thanks, Joe, for all of your hard work, and Tom for getting this, this through. It's been long awaiting, so that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, BJ.
You're welcome.
Finance, Joe Verducci.
Thanks, Bill. Budget to actual reports for all funds reflect us paying all the money through, or all the bills through the end of the month. And the only things that we have are two payrolls and a utility bill, utility bills to pay. So we're pretty close to where we are as far as our projections over our budget from last year. The General Fund had a revenue of 106% and expenditures at 92. So, so during this COVID, we definitely tightened our belts in anticipation of, of some revenues coming down, and they didn't come down as, as much as we anticipated. So that's a great thing. The other great thing was that we had only about $11,000 that we had to, that were outstanding for, from 2017, which we were very pleased about. And everybody saw the report from Anne Marie. As far as the delinquent sewage, unfortunately, we had to send the second round of leans to Jordan Tax Service on, on those. But remember, the shut-offs have been suspended due to the pandemic. So we're, we're in the process of the, what we were required to do on that as well. As far as the capital improvement loan, that is all behind us. That was finalized in the end, middle of November. Those funds are in the General Fund, and will be used for the capital improvements that we are looking to do. Of course, the first loan payment is coming out later this week. So we're, we're in the, in the stage of starting to pay that back, and really excited about all the things that we had to approve today because of us moving forward with the plans we've put in place for over a year, if not two. So excited about that. That's all I have to report. Any questions?
Sir, any questions? Nope. Thanks, Joe. Parks and Recreation, Joe Colosimo.
Okay, I'll try to real quick here. All the parks, the restaurants involved have winterized, so keep that in mind if you want to visit the parks. Chartiers Park Gate is supposed to be opened on days that there are no, there's no snow or inclement weather by either the park, Public Works or the police. Uh, what else do I have? I've been, I've been talking to Aaron Weaver from the library, and they are interested in placing storyboards in one of the parks, you know, McLaughlin or Chartiers, which they would be responsible for placing and maintaining the signs and whatnot. I've asked her to, I've talked to Joe Carr about this. Joe said he'd be the go-between with the borough and the library on this thing. They've applied for a grant which is supposed to come out in the spring. If they don't get the grant, they want to go ahead and do this anyway. So sometime down the road, we're gonna have storyboard to one of the parks. Also, I noticed an item in the signal item regarding McLaughlin Park. They implied more or less that we were definitely putting in an all-purpose field down at the excavation site. Now, as far as I know, we haven't decided anything on that, whether we're able to put a ball field down there and all purpose. It's still up in the air budget-wise and whatnot, whether we need a new ball field or not. So this is down the road. I'm not saying we're not going to do it, but we just haven't made that decision yet, so. That's all I have.
I, I have a question on that, Joe. So when, when they finish, what, is that just going to be a field of grass?
As of now, yeah, I would, I think, or the engineer might answer this, but I think they got to play grass down there.
Yeah, they will.
Yeah.
So you'll have nice green space grassy area anyway, but as to whether or not we finish it, we have to decide that yet.
Okay. Any questions of Joe? Hey, thank you, Joe. Public Works, Nino Petroselli.
Uh, Nino got a bump, so I'd said I'd read some of the items off his report here for. The leaf and brush grinder questions ended on December 4th. First call out for the snow removal was on December 1st. The Borough and Township Managers of Collier, Bridgeville, Scott, Carnegie, and Heidelberg are working on putting the emergency plan in place with each town, should there be a COVID-19 outbreak within one of the public works departments? And if there is a large snow or, let's see, neighboring neighborhood towns to help cloud roads and the neighboring towns, should a department be short-staffed? Also, the Public Works Department has placed a partition in the, the administrative offices between Cheryl Glower and Cheryl Valentina's office. There's a door now and a partitioning wall between the two offices. So there's more or less two separate offices to provide privacy and basically sign proofing between the lobby and the different offices, so.
It's a.
That's basically it.
That deposition, that's also, it's a security purpose as well. As to someday, other security things will come in that area. We need that sooner or later. And Joe, did you mention that we got some applicant for public work?
No, I didn't, there was.
Some applicant from public work, I believe we got 10. Right, Joe, we got 10 of them, right?
Yes, sir.
And we choose, I believe we choose, my mind is not too good, actually, I'm doing pretty good with that COVID. I think we choose five or four. Something like that. So we plan on interviewing them at the end of December. We would like to hire them, present it to, to the board on the January meeting. And the financial committee would have to see how the, the budget is. But I'm sure they will be all right, because Chuck is leaving in February. And the, the hiring would be the less cycle, of course, of the payroll of January. And we'll let you know about our interview. We got some good applicant. And we may have something good coming up from those people.
Joe, I think we, we, we included that in the budget anticipation of January, wasn't it?
Oh, good, good, good. I'm glad, yes. That's true, yes. Very good. So we'll let you know what are we going to do. And if you want to, if you, if full council want to interview them, that's fine. I always, when we, I think, but if you want our recommendation, we'll, we'll present the candidate. Okay? Let us.
Okay. Thank you, Nino.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Public Safety, Bruce Geller Ducci.
He's been having some technical difficulties back and forth, so I don't know if he's on.
He's froze right now.
I don't see him.
The only thing I have, Bill, is, um, I don't know if you can hear us, Bruce, but we're, we're having difficulty with you.
Not with you personally, but with the computer.
Hey, wait, I'll, I'll move on to the mayor, and we'll come back to Bruce. Let's see if that gets unfrozen for him. Mayor Betty Copeland.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to wish everyone
Yeah.
Happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa. And we certainly need to be proud of the fact that our Senator-elect Devlin Robinson is from Bridgeville, and he will be sworn in January 5th. So we need to send him congratulations. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. Police Chief Chad King.
Thank you, Council President. Obviously, yesterday I had the opportunity to go to Monroeville to attend the yearly Stuff a Store event. I picked up a lot of gifts, and I'll be distributing them tomorrow to the kids at the local daycare centers in Bridgeville. Obviously, we're going to do it a little differently this year, having the social distance and wear masks. But the kids at all the local daycares will get some presents. Thursday of this week, I have a big delivery of toys donated from Toys for Tikes. They'll be coming in this Thursday. And we plan on utilizing those on Sunday, the 20th, when we team up with the fire department. We're going to figure a way to incorporate our yearly Buddy the Elf event with the fire department, with Mr. and Mrs. Claus, and go mobile throughout the town, so as not to have a big gathering in one area. And the plan is to try to distribute toys to all the kids that can run out of their house real quick and come to the curbside. And on every street, we should have enough toys for every boy and girl that we see. So it might be a little tough and a little slow-going at times, but we'll find a way to make it work.
Hey, hey, Chief, I'm a little disappointed we're not seeing your beard. I was all excited to show off my goatee, just to compare it with yours.
You know what, Joe? I had a picture set up to go on Zoom, but it didn't take for some reason. I'm having, so I don't know what's going on with this.
You gotten a good response from that? It seemed like it was going really well.
Yeah, yes, of course, we extended it through December for the guys that wanted to participate. Everybody paid another entry fee, and we should have several hundred bucks to donate at, at the end of November to the South Hills area Meals on Wheels. And I think some of the guys just appreciated the fact they were allowed to grow a beard, you know, for a few short months out of the year. So it was kind of nice.
Is there a penalty on being allowed to shave it? Because it's really scratchy to me.
Yes, for council members, the penalty is twice the normal fee.
Bill, why aren't you moving on? We need to move on.
Yeah, okay, well. If I could hit that mute button up there, I would.
So that's all I have, and I think if you're able to tune in this Sunday, we're, we're going to try to make a little skit, you know, go live to be quick with it, and it should be quite entertaining as, as it has been the past year. So that's all I have, and happy holidays, Merry Christmas, everybody.
Thanks, Chief. Stay safe out there, man.
Thank you.
Uh, let me go back to Bruce Geller Ducci. Looks like he's moving around on there now. Can you hear me, Bruce?
Poor Bruce.
Are you there, Bruce?
Yeah.
We, we couldn't hear you speaking before under your report.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm there.
All right, yeah, go ahead. Yeah, well. I see him, he's moving, but I can't hear him.
He's muted.
How about now, Bill?
Okay, we got you now, go ahead.
Okay. The only guy I had was the, the, uh, Joe and Chad going to.
We're, we're struggling with you, Bruce. You, you're freezing, and we can't understand what you're saying.
Bruce, why don't you call in?
For the.
Yeah, we, well, we lost him totally. Yeah, we lost him totally. So. I did not do that. All right, let's move on to Solicitor Tom McDermott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have my written report. I just wish to extend to everybody my best wishes on the holiday. And thoughts and prayers to Nino and family. I know the virus is as tough as he is. And everybody keep masked up and look forward to getting together in the new year.
Well said, well said, Tom. Borough Engineer Kevin Brett.
Oh, yeah, we did provide a report. And just a quick update, the road program is complete. Parking lot's complete. We included a few pictures of the various projects. Public Works, the Parks Project, Flood Control, contractor's been moving along well. And the paving contractor, we've been back and forth with him on whether or not an additional time extension till spring is going to be necessary to complete the paving with the weather that's going to come in this week. We believe that is necessary. So we're going to go ahead and prepare a change order to extend his contract to May 15th of next year. That way, when the plant's open in the spring, he can finish. Because currently, there's a couple of saw spots that need fixed in the sub base. And we're working through the cost for that with him. And we would hate to pave this and then have it fall apart because of inclement weather. So we do recommend extending the time period until May 15th. So the park can be open next year. Has the paving and a little bit of landscaping to complete, so. Other than that, the other projects you awarded tonight, we actually have pre-construction meetings on Borough Hill and the Backflow Preventer tomorrow. And the contractor will get started on those. Jane Street, we're still waiting on materials that come in. Some of that stuff is on back order. But those all should be completed in the first quarter next year. So any questions?
Who said this was a slow time of year, huh, Kip?
That's right.
Yeah, you guys are busy, buddy.
And Merry Christmas to everybody also.
Same to you, Matt.
All right, Fire Chief Ray Custin.
Good evening, everyone. December, or I'm sorry, November's call volume, we finished the month with 26 calls. Happy to announce that the fire department placed in the service last Thursday to PAPR units. What a PAPR is, is a air purifying system that we wear on medical calls when the fire department responds on QRS calls. They are the safest out there right now dealing with COVID patients. So we're fortunate to have those two units. Unfortunately, we did have one active member get diagnosed with COVID. Fortunately, he has pretty much recovered. He's able to return to duty next week. He is doing very well with it. As Chad announced, the Santa detail is this Sunday. It does start at noon. And lastly, I too would like to wish everyone Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And let me add a Happy COVID-Free New Year.
You're right, my friend.
Also, if I may make one more announcement, just a reminder that we are doing the Slayful Cash Tickets. That drawing does go off on Christmas night at 7:00 PM. Anyone still wishing to buy tickets can get in contact with any member or go to our website. Our face, I'm sorry, our Facebook page.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Is Dan Miller on? I didn't, I didn't see him.
I don't believe so.
Yeah, I don't believe so. Okay.
He did submit a written report.
Pardon me?
He did submit a written report.
Yeah, I saw his written report. Historical Society, anybody on from the Historical Society?
Yes, President Mary Wise would still like to encourage council members to buy a membership for $15. And we still have our note cards also available for sale. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Anyone from the library? Liz, I see Liz from the Parking Authority. Liz, you have anything to add to the meeting tonight? You're on mute. Can you hear me? Yeah, we can hear you. Okay. Nothing to add? Okay. All right. Thank you. Anyone from the Planning Commission? One from Planning Commission? And Borough Manager Joe Cower.
I'd be happy to answer any questions off my written report that was submitted. Just a reminder for the public that all the written reports of all the officials is posted on the Borough website after each council meeting. It's a good reference. I would encourage everyone to just take a look at it. They're on the council meeting page. There's a section for reports. It's interesting.
Thank you, sir. Do I have anything under old business?
Mr. Chairman, how about that? If you may, excuse me, the letter from Planning Commission, you, you guys want to give them a response? You guys have the chickens. I remember a guy that. Yeah, Joe know him very well. At the cog, always talking about chicken, chicken, chicken. And he responds on that.
Well, it's open for discussion right now.
Oh, I'm sorry. So you have that on the agenda?
No, no, no. You brought it up. So we're, it's open for discussion.
Well, we give, we give them the permission to, to did some background, some research. But I don't think they went too far on it. I don't agree with them, in my opinion. Because, you know, we have other creatures that there'd be discrimination to so many other creatures. Animals. Some people have snakes for pets. Some people have this, they have that. So I don't know. We should definitely think about it. I don't know, Mr. Chairman, what do you think about it? But we should think about it and give them an answer.
I would say I don't have a dog in the fight, all right, or a chicken in the coop, if you will. I don't own chickens and rest assured, I don't intend to run out and, and buy some should we pass an ordinance. But, you know, I, I don't know that we put forth enough effort into looking into factual information to be my own personal opinion. I heard a lot of rumors about rodent infestation, the inability to enforce the ordinances. Problems of our town somewhat being overrun by chickens is what it almost sounded like. But I, I've read a lot about it, both in favor and against keeping of chickens. I didn't know chicken, chickens create a good fertilizer. You know, I didn't know they provide, I do know they provide, you know, farm-to-table fresh eggs. So there's, there's a lot of things good about it. But listening to the Planning Commission, they brought up some, in my opinion, some valid points. You know, the side yards and the perimeter setbacks and things. Talked about rodent, you know, issues that may come with it. I, I don't know. I personally, I would have liked to have seen us go back and address some of the concerns with the ordinance. Such as setbacks, because personally, again, I, if we, if we write it right, not every home in this community will be able to have chickens. I mean, if you put setbacks, you know, not every lot is built for it. Some are. And if we write it right, I think we would be able to have something that we could enforce, so.
Well, I, I think part of what, what Planning Commission did say is, is that if they modified it and did certain changes, were there enough of the committee that were okay with those changes to, to, to submit a ordinance? I think that they were trying to save the trouble as well as the money of going forward. I'm the same way as you. I'm. It really doesn't matter to me. It sounds like it could be more issues in regards to what they talked about, but I don't have any evidence over that. But I think that that was part of the reason that they didn't see fit on moving forward on having Tom continue on in regards to the expenses. Please, Tom, don't take that the wrong way. The additional resources to move forward. It didn't, it sounded like they, they weren't moving forward or because they didn't see fit. That was at least my interpretation when, being at the Planning Commission, listening to their discussions.
I, you know, I, I understand what you're saying. I would tell you, we, we just authorized payments of about, I can't tell you how much money for things around town today. I think that the ordinance is written, basically. I think you just need some adjustments to it to address some concerns for consideration. And again, I'm not suggesting that we pass this. I'm suggesting that we, we address it with an ordinance that would, would work for this community so that we could consider it. And then people can vote their, you know, their position on this. Not everybody's for it. I don't think everybody's against it. But I think, I think we owe it to ourselves, you know, for the minimal more time that Tom would have to put into it to, to at least address it for those people that have shown concerns that they're interested in doing it. So that's my two cents. Open the floor to anybody for comment.
I agree, Bill. I think we need to explore more options. I think, given the likelihood of COVID, has not given us the ability to explore as many options. In-person checks on these places as much as maybe you or I or Joe Cower may have liked. Or in general, that there are things that, you know, we may not feel comfortable doing, maybe setting up committee to explore these options. I mean, I know there's been some vehement responses to not having chickens. And I also know there's been some vehement responses to, these are my pets, these are my family. And I understand both sides. I wish that we could further explore the option in 2021.
It should be definitely limit, I'm sorry, Nick. It should be limited how many of those you want. We already went through in council to make sure they don't disturb the, the neighbor part of the property. We went through that. I don't know. It don't make no difference to me. I, I was born in a farm. I mean, I like all the animals. It's, the town is, a lot of people want them, a lot of people don't want them. So, excuse me, it's up to, it's up to us to have a, the selection checking on and, and, and see what we could do. So we can satisfy F of the people of, well, that's hard. We'll never satisfy for everybody.
I just.
You can do some research, Mr. Chairman. That's correct.
Can I ask a quick question on these chickens? Joe Cower or anybody else, could you have any idea how many people are actually wanting chickens or actually have chickens in Bridgeville?
I couldn't answer how many people want them. I know a good half dozen already have them.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
If I might very briefly, not chiming in one way or the other, if council wishes, the setback, I think that was just done the way it was traditionally. We can certainly, Joe and I in 10 minutes can come up with and fix it and peg it to traditional things within your yard, setback from your own border. And secondly, just with regard to enforcement. If you look in the total chapter, a lot of the teeth in the enforcement and in the sanitation requirements is in the overall chapter. In other words, it percent change to dogs, cats, chickens, if this was enacted as well. But we could certainly add any teeth as quickly as you wish to it as well. But it is all in there in terms of the enforcement that we borrowed from other model ordinances. And again, that's all at council's pleasure.
Are there, are there any other comments about the issue? So what I, what I think we're, we're challenged with right now is do we, as a group, authorize the solicitor to pursue amendments to that ordinance as written to address the concerns? Or do we, as a group, accept the recommendation from the Planning Commission and move forward? So that's what's in front of us.
I would. I would delay that, any of the comment, any of the information, negative or positive to the Planning Commission. I would delay for a while. Let's talk about it next year or something. Because some people, they definitely, they want, like Nick say, that's my pet, you know, and hurts their feelings. And I, I don't know. It don't make any difference to me. But I hear a lot of comment, no, you can't take that much. You can't take the chicken away from me. But some people say you can't take this from me. We, we the one, let's, let's do some study. If you wish to authorize Tom to give us a better, look, better ordinance or better idea. I'd be more than glad. If you want with them a month or two, that's all right. That's what.
I would like to see us table it if possible. I would like us to do some more due diligence on both sides of the matter. Maybe look into, is this a rat problem? Is this more of a personal problem with neighbors? I would just like more information on both sides of the discussion, to be honest.
And that's, that's going to fall on us at this point because the Planning Commission has made the recommendation. So if we need, if we're going to look into it, that's going to be on us at this point.
Absolutely.
Okay.
We either accepted their, we did accept the recommendation or do our, our study, one or the other. But we can think about it. It's going to be too cold. They're going to be inside anyway pretty soon.
Okay. All right. Do I have anything else under old business? How about new business?
I got some new.
Oh, go ahead, Nick.
All right. I have a few things I'd like to say for new business. First, I'd like to send a thank you to all our community and patrons. And that's Bridgeville area for reaching out for my twin sister and I birthday food drive for Bethany. Community Bridgeville Area Community Food Bank, we raised over $1,500 cash and about 2,000 plus cans of non-perishable foods. So thank you very much, Bridgeville, and everyone who donated and helped out and spread the word. Also, you know, everybody's a little bit aware where I work. I'd really appreciate if everybody can get out and help support local small businesses. Bridgeville is a community that's honestly, it's run and grown on these small businesses from the top down. And if we can all just give a little bit more, I know there's not a lot to be given from all of us, but there's just a little bit more, even if it's just kindness. It can go a long way in this, this holiday season. Furthermore, I'd like to just thank, thank everybody for a great 2020. Things could have been a lot more difficult, and I think we all worked really well together. Beyond that, happy holidays. Stay safe and get well soon, Nino. Thank you.
Take care.
I, I too would like to wish the residents a very Merry Christmas and a happy holiday season. Especially to those who are struggling to cope with the pandemic, whether it's health issues or finances, or just downright tired of this pandemic. Hanging there hoping for a better 2021. Thank you all, council members, for all the work you did. This was a challenging year. Some would say it might be easier to do things this way by Zoom. But I, I would argue it's more of a challenge. Our communication gaps at times were, were hard. But you guys worked hard to get through this, and I appreciate all the work you guys put into it. So Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year to all of you and all the residents. Anybody else?
Thank you. Same to you.
I'll take a motion to adjourn. I'm sorry, you have something, BJ?
I was just going to make a comment about the winter blast and a nice job that, that the BCA and the fire department, namely Ray Custin and Diane and Nick for being the ugly elf that scared my kids. But they did a good job. And in such, you know, troubling times, some people came out. We had a lot of cars that came by and picked up the, the families picked up their, their bags. So things moved forward. And I think everybody had a great job. Mayor Copeland turned on the light. So I appreciated it. I was there in person and I thought they did a great job. And I appreciated that they put forth the effort. So thanks to all of you.
Thank you.
Oh, and practically as you, it was great. Thanks for the.
All right, thank you all. Any, any other comments under new business? If not, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Come on.
Do I have a second?
Take it.
All, all in favor?
All right. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion adjourned.